Good evening, welcome to the special meeting of the Scottsville Planning Commission. My name's Matt Wallace, I'm the Service of Scottsville Town Administrator. It is 6:00 PM on Monday, August the 22nd, 2022. This special meeting of the Planning Commission is advertised and held in compliance with Virginia's open meeting laws and the State Freedom of Information Act. We're assembling here in person at Scottsville Town Hall, 401 Valley Street. The meeting is open to the public, and there are also opportunities to view and participate online or by calling in by phone. We may have a mix of Planning Commission members participating in person or online in accordance with our town policies. If you're viewing here in the future on our YouTube channel, thank you very much. We'll come to order here shortly as we are performing together. Thank you. Mr. Grisco, good to see you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, that's great.
Wonderful, thank you.
That was highly inappropriate.
Good evening. Welcome, we have a double appointment coming for this agenda, Mr. Grisco. As to the refreshments that are available for our creative comprehensive plan reception. Mr. Grisco, it's good to see you here remotely on some library space that are.
I'm virtually eating pizza with you.
Thank you, this was sincere. We have an actual agenda for some, we're gonna discuss. So we've got a different layout over today and a light agenda talking through some of our planning commission boards. So we'll keep the mic moving around the room to have some discussion. But Sherri, Sir Prosciano will take it over in just a moment. We do have all five members of the planning commission here, either in person or virtually. Two members at the public, Matt Wallace and I. So, thank you. I appreciate the extra meetings for some kind of background discussion on conference. So this can be arduous up there, it's so nice to get our tweet under us before we take off.
So, does this time, I wanna, you know, I was thinking, I can prefer it earlier, but.
I don't disagree with that, but personally, it would be a little less workable than the second one.
It's a little less workable than the second one.
Tonight works well, but in general, the second one is better.
Well, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order and agree to the agenda. And if we agree to the agenda, item number two would be Mr. Grisco, so that'll give us a definition. To the agenda?
Yes. Mr. Grisco, what can you share with us from your town council discussions here the past couple of weeks?
I think, I'm trying to remember. Let's see.
I can share the previous council meeting.
I do apologize, I've been a little bit, for about, for a bit. I had a bit of a curveball dealing with the lovely bug flying around the world these days. And it's kind of thrown me off a little bit, but I was trying to remember where we were before that, Matt.
Were you at some last minute, sir?
I was, I was on the call just like this. That's when I had COVID. Which I didn't realize at the time, but I was, so I honestly, I don't recall.
It was a pretty light council meeting agenda. We updated the terms of office, congratulations. They pointed with no, with no disputes and variable discussion. Thank you for your continued service. Council members also looked at the committee charters, their organizing documents for the prescriptions of these committees. They've been shifting the scope on a couple of those, especially related to budget and maintenance and some of the other ways that they can provide oversight and your support to town law. There wasn't much in the way of discussion or changes around the architectural review board and planning commission. The scope on those is more defined in state law, so there's a much clearer set of guidelines about this feature. But on topics like beautification or event planning, it's much easier to kind of rearrange those and provide updated guidance to councilors as they do to organize more. So look for more of that, there's some real interest from council members to be more present on those issues. And volunteer cleanups of that planning. Oh, exactly.
One of the things, Matt, if, just to, just to, and looking at this again, and my apologies for missing the obvious, was just the reappointment of our chair. And I think it's important to note that as a planning commissioner, she has been a great blessing to the town. And also, I think it's really important to realize that the council does appreciate the work of the planning commission. And I was saying this to Matt and to our former mayor just the other day, just how much I've come to appreciate what you all do. I think as a town councillor, I had more been caught up in my role and not realizing all the work that you all have done or previous planning commissioners before you. So at any rate, excited to have you back, Lisa.
Thank you.
Chair, could we just a motion on agreeing to the agenda first and second, just for formalities.
This happens when you bring pizza.
Would like to put forward a motion to accept the agenda as is. Hey, other favor?
Thank you.
So, Mr. Grisco, unfortunately, we're, we'll remedy the IT issue that we had, but I think you missed some emails. One suggest, well, there was a back and forth about the new planning commissioner package. The package that we got last year contains the comprehensive plan, the West Downtown Small Area Plan. There was an excellent suggestion by Commissioner Strassner to include minutes from the last six meetings and summary of what work is on the table in front of the planning commission now. So that package will continue to be given out to new members. And you weren't involved in that, but one suggestion that I had to piggyback on Mr. Strassner's suggestion was perhaps sending out the town council minutes and agenda to the planning commission and including that in our agenda package.
Easy enough way to kind of send them back and forth. And maybe both directions too, that council can see what planning commission has come up. And that'll be like a radar for them that anything that you've got coming to vote, whether you recommend a group or a mine, they're gonna get it next. So it's a way for them to keep it on their radar and not be surprised when something big comes out that maybe they hadn't had before.
Yeah, and ask any questions that they have about it beforehand. Yeah, so that, that might help your role of being the liaison and might also help you, if you have minutes in front of you or the agenda in front of you at the time of our meeting, to remember, you know, if there was anything pressing that you wanted to share.
Yeah, and I would say, to be fair, I was not looking at tonight presenting anything just because this is not our normal meeting. And, but your point is a good one about what needs to be done in preparation for each meeting. I do think the simple clerical thing is that, is that our staff include a copy of it over to the planning commission from the town council, I think that's an easy include over there. But, but the other part of it is, is a good idea to continue the updates on what we have going on.
May I add a request? I thought when I first started, I would love to have had a sit down with you or you and Poppy Air to, to go through what the planning commission is. Obviously, we know what it is, but just what does it mean to Scottsville? And, you know, just an overview of the things that you might face in a normal meeting, things like that. I didn't, I didn't have much of an introduction just because Sherri was in the middle of sharing things. And so it was, I didn't get much of an orientation.
That was going into the event.
And that is up to me also to seek you out. But it might be a good first step with someone is to have a one-on-one or a one-on-two with you all to get an idea of what's expected.
Some, some combination of myself, the mayor, and the planning commission chair. You know, here's kind of the welcome, some of the expectations, the support that's available. I can, I, this is the one volume of state law that I keep with me all the time because it's got, among other things, the land use stuff in it. So I can, I can point to, you know, chapter and verse on here's why we do what we do. Other pieces of it, we have discretion of, we write our own complaint, but it's us here that we have to have one.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not a huge, you know, learning curve, but it is helpful to know what to expect.
Even on some of the meeting trends on, you haven't been on a body that does Robert's before, right? How do I make a motion? Why do the public hearings look the way you do?
I was so good at that.
So I, I hear that.
Yeah, well, and, okay, good. That, I mean, that's, that's another thing I hadn't thought of, Robert's was a reporter. I mean, we kind of love our way through it, but it might be helpful to, I mean, I know it's a whole book, but maybe putting some of that together, not just us, but for the town council also, we have new town councillors.
Yeah, but it, it does flow more smoothly when everyone knows that. And it can be empowering too, if, you know, like you as a member, you know what you want to do. Say it, having a good rest with those rules. And if any of that feels valuable, that's like, is something that we should have done, I agree with you, by all means, let me know. And like, I'll be very happy to do that at your convenience. And Mayor Smith is pretty helpful in that too, having had more, more years of service with the town. That is, he's pretty helpful with that, very available to turn me on background. That feels like it would fill any gaps that this, you know, even now.
Set the book if you'd like to.
I'm thinking, I actually have the book too, I just have to open it, which I haven't gotten to yet, but it's there, it's kind of in my face. So, but yeah, and even though it sounds similar, we're looking into it. One thing that I'd like to say is after last meeting, there was some tension. And then I walked away not feeling really great about how things went down. So I just want to say that this, you know, as a public body, this needs to be an environment where everyone feels free to speak and feels respected. I also want to say that, you know, as commissioners, we have a lot of information before us to weigh. And we rely on public input to make sure that we're doing the best job possible and to help us see things that we don't always see. So we need that feedback, we need that input. And I don't ever want anyone walking out of here feeling like they weren't heard, whether they're a councillor, a commissioner, or a staff member, or someone in the audience. You know, as somebody who has spoken up publicly in the past and had, you know, comment remarks from the back where people were, you know, chuckling about what I said or scoffing at it. It's distracting and, you know, you just kind of get through your comments as best you can sometimes. But, you know, I want this to be an environment where we all feel like we can walk out of here feeling good about what we've accomplished and the fact that folks are being heard.
I don't know what you're talking about, but, you know. What's their problem?
You can recap from the YouTube, I would recommend you check out on YouTube so that you can see what transpired last week. There was, there were a lot of public comments, so by the way, I went back and re-watched it. And one of the reasons why I was kind of caught off my game when we talked about pushing the HUD to the back is because there was so much that was said that had been thinking. And I went back and I made notes. And when we do have that conversation again, but in other words, you're, you know, you may want to just go back to check out the YouTube.
You didn't talk to me about that?
Well, I want to keep communicating, but. But now I feel that it's misty, but there was, there was an exchange where somebody was speaking for the commission and perhaps felt dismissed and gave up on his comments. And so we lost the benefit of the rest of that conversation that this person wanted to share with us. So, that was it. Oh, but another point, another point, and we could talk about this more in our closed session later. Feel free to take notes. In the past, it was said to us that perhaps you shouldn't take notes because people may think you're not paying attention to your writing. And I don't know how people in the audience feel when we're writing, but I know when I'm taking notes, I remember things better. So you don't want to, you know, be too engaged in taking notes when you forget what or you lose sight of what's being said. But if it helps you to take notes, then I think that's okay to do.
I come out of every one of your meetings with a to-do list. And I, and I feel like that's part of my practice, and I can point to what someone said. I've heard these before, I got, and if I were to do the wrong thing, this is my, I use the money after every.
Thank you. Okay, are we ready to jump in, comprehensive plan? Yes. All right, so as Mr. Wallace pointed out, we have certain legal requirements. And that's what, that's our context for this, this plan. What else, go ahead and fill it.
Your sort of table of contents for this plan is roughly defined in state law. There's a kind of bare minimum of what the sections have to be. And that's, that's why the fine document before you looks basically the way it does. Lately, communities have gotten a little more innovative with their plan structure. They still need to be able to reference those things. But just because that bullet point is there doesn't mean that that's how all the chapters have to be laid out. So Richmond's current plan doesn't look like Scottsville's because they took the state vote on the advisement and then made what they felt was comprehensive to what they're saying. So that's, that's a trend. The kind of countervailing trend is that these innovative plans have gotten more smothered in 300 pages and become impossible to use as pretty and as thorough as they look. So there's also kind of a pushback in the field of something that's more stripped down and elegant that communicates the goals in more of a like corporate strategic plan sort of way. And then references some other demographic data elsewhere for something tighter. So I'm curious, which all kind of, how do you think about some of these? Because it can go in very different directions. And I've seen communities that I admire and planners that I admire doing very different things. So we have the opportunity with our schedule here to reexamine Scottsville's community goals and rethink some, I think, serious challenges that are coming my way. What was most important and what kind of community would be? And how would we engage with the public in shaping that? And what do we make to communicate with them now? So it's, it's daunting for me because I can see it going in different directions. So I'm very curious for sure. Was the, was the reference to the 2018 and the 2013 document before helpful? What we have now, what are some of your questions?
I immediately noticed one of the objectives under section is this. It's page 16 on the 2018 under land use. Objective, it's all to objective three. Create a new zoning district for downtown that allows more flexibility in use, including a mixture of uses on St. Ursul while setting formal requirements consistent with the historical character of the district. So we were just talking about doing that. So it seems that, you know, goals that we had set forth in this document are still being hatched over now. So I think it's.
Well, that's what struck me was I'm not even sure that half of these goals have even been touched as far as what, what that's momentum is.
Right.
So like, talking about redoing this kind of thing seems kind of productive. Like it'd be good to look through each section and see what we've accomplished and what we could really prioritize.
Agreed.
But that's what strikes me.
There's a lot of goal statements there. And it, it's, it's more than what we can reasonably work on. Turning 80 goal statements into a five-year action plan. Do we expect to get 80 things done? Some, some of these goals have been sitting here, the language variable change for two, three, four lending cycles. So we either fake it out because we're not serious about it, or we just serious about it.
Yeah, well, a lot of it.
Say it another way, some of the ideas there have been there for decades. So it's not, there's a, Matt, correct me if I'm wrong in saying it this way, but the comprehensive plan is a mixture of dreams, practical thinking, kind of a vision of where the town is, has been, wants to go. And then a little bit of a confluence of how do we get there? So it's, it really is a mixture of a lot of different things that point, I think, would you say that's correct, Matt?
Yeah, yeah, so some of them, some of the goal statements sort of sit as just describing ongoing activity, so it's not something that gets completed. But I don't know if that needs to be said. But you're right, reviewing, reviewing some of the current goals is probably a good place to start. Spanish, we still do get it.
I understand why it needs to be brought, there needs to be some room for creativity and innovation. I understand why it needs to be broad, there needs to be some room for creativity and innovation, but. There's, I don't, I didn't read a whole lot of action. You know, and not, maybe that's not appropriate for the, the comp plan, but. I would think a plan should have some more defined. Ways of, of accomplishing some of these things. Yes, if it's a wish list, but it's also something that we'd like to see happen and why not activate it?
Right, right.
Well, you know, I, I think listing these objectives and strategies in the comp plan. Is, you know, they can remain broad and then during our planning sessions, we should be taking a look at. How we, how do we implement these strategies, like what are five things we can do? To support downtown businesses and commercial enterprises in Scottsville.
Yeah.
Um, so taking, I, I feel like sometimes we are on a, we are very reactive. As a body to things that are presented to us for action and, and. I, I do feel like sometimes that's why this stuff doesn't ever get done.
True, true.
Well, and it's interesting too, because when we were talking about sidewalks and pathways and things of that nature. We had had a discussion and I think the whole thing with Tiger Fuel is not exactly what we wanted, but certainly stepped forward. In that way, um, but there was no real, uh, plan to say, okay. This is the study that's needed, this is the project that needs to be reexamined, that kind of thing, so. Uh, I'd be glad to maybe meet with you or about that kind of thing and, and come up with some ideas and present it.
That's a, that's a great example where, you know, if, if the comp plan had shown, this is our ideal bike pedestrian map.
Yeah.
And these are the segments which will be filled in eventually. And then our actions, whenever we have an opportunity near one of these sites.
Yeah.
During any rezoning or, or SGP matter, we will use our proper inhibition powers to try to build out this network.
Okay.
Lacking that guidance.
Right.
My negotiating is a lot.
Sidewalks to nowhere.
Right.
Right, and I'd like to, you know, one of the things that I don't know a whole lot about is available land use. You know, that's already in place, what could be used, you know? What are the ordinances around, you know, use of, of land right next to the road or whatever? Um, but I would like to volunteer to spearhead something where we outline the plan for. Putting that together, having that in place, like you said, if we have any future. Development, then we'd be ready to say, this is one of the things we need to include.
And, and that helps, um, current and future property owners too, that we've been very clear about what we want.
Yeah.
They can make expectations, project plans around that, and if they wanna do something that's clearly inconsistent with our plan. They can look at this and take the business elsewhere.
Yeah.
And we'd be able to fight.
Well, you know, and. Again, the feedback from the, the public, there's multiple references to sidewalks and pedestrian crossings in here, but they still didn't make it onto the type of, type of fuel plan, so, I mean. Short of saying, if this land is developed, we need to see a sidewalk here, it, you know, it's in here and, and this. It's hard to, to spell out like, okay, when this happens, we're doing this because we don't know that we're gonna get a special use permit on that site. But we did know that we wanted sidewalks and pedestrian crossings, we did do that, we just need to, you know, keep that.
There were a couple of things that have come across our table. In the last, you know, months since I've been through the commission. But haven't come to fruition, talks a lot about affordable housing. And you have been our champion for affordable housing. I think that, uh, Schump doesn't have to. Address that anymore, because he's on the other side of all that, he's barreling forward. Um, and so. You know, we missed an opportunity there, um, without knowing what we could. Do to make that happen, you know, we suggested all of the things that we could. And were quite enthusiastic about it, but. Did we, did we want to approve it without getting that nailed down? You know?
Right.
And I don't, I don't. Put blame on any of us, but I think there's definitely a couple of lost opportunities that we picked out well. With probably these kinds of things, you know, like, here's an example of a plan. I think what we. To bring it to fruition, but. Alright, let's stop talking.
Please don't. No, but, you know, and it's hard because we wanna see affordable housing and yes, mentioned, but we're also sort of limited in what we can do as a town. Short of paying for it ourselves and being the owner and developer. You know, you, you can't. Always wire somebody, I mean, you're, you're, your business, you can say. I want to see X number of affordable, you can define what that is, I see you moving forward with it. Um, and we, we tried to accomplish that by getting duplexes, uh, quadra complexes were not a, a fan favorite. Talking, um, conversations that we had, but it's, it's hard.
Yeah, it's hard to juggle all that too.
It's hard as a small town to, to enforce some of this stuff, this is kind of a wish list. And it's a, it's a planning document to help us guide our, you know, our future goals, but we may not be able to see all this through permission.
Charlotteville's putting millions of dollars into affordable housing trust funds and still not getting the outcomes that they want and, and nobody's helping.
So that's tax dollars.
Yeah.
That's, you know, it's coming out of everyone's tax pocket.
Yeah.
Well, especially when we can't even get anybody to even ballpark what these things are gonna go for, you know, get the dance around this.
Oh, I thought.
Around that.
There's really, really great things behind the handles there.
Oh, during a pandemic, I couldn't possibly.
Well.
Even predict anything.
Yeah.
Except that we're gonna make a load of money.
Well, and nobody came up and said, okay, with that habitat board.
Right.
And they're gonna come in and put together some of these.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so that, that's a, a point that I wanted to make about the PUD and I don't wanna get all on topic because I, but. Related to.
No, and it's mentioned in here too, community partnerships, you know, working with.
So I'd like to see that tied in a little more because I think that's one way to get some of our goals. Across by partnering with community organizations, so we can. Kind of make that a stipulation on some of our future projects and see what creative ideas people are bringing in or that might be.
Should be in that goal list up the butt or strategy.
Yeah, yeah, and I mean, it's reasonable, I know we're looking at something that's an overall view and a guide. But also to just say, it will be a recording that we. Outline a plan that we've put together with. You know, an organization that can help you provide. You know, whenever we get there, unless we start pushing it.
Well, so it could be that one of the drawbacks, so this plan in the past was to define. What affordable housing looks like and how, how we might go back if there's no strategy items for it, so that's.
Yeah, yeah, it's certainly, um. It's gained a lot of priority compared to previous versions of this plan. In, in Scottsville's past, almost all of the housing was pretty affordable and there wasn't a lot of development pressure, so it was a pretty stable situation. Houses were, were workforce portable because they were old. And, uh. I don't think that council had to do very much on that.
But. But, you know, it's something about missed votes, the opportunity to develop that land in the past when the market wasn't insane.
Oh, yeah.
That was a missed opportunity, if we had housing votes five years ago, this plan came out, then it would be. Totally different place pointed now.
Yeah.
One thing, one thing I've, I just wanna say this to be helpful is. You also have to, I guess, I would say, recognize. That throughout, in, in my limited understanding as a town councillor. There have been times over the years where we've had great plans, but it takes. People who are actively taking the plans to make them happen, I will, I will say, going back to something I learned about the Van Cleve Nature Area, most of the things. That I ended up spearheading in the park were not things I thought of, they were somebody else's idea from 15 years ago or 20 years ago. It was because we actively pursued them, let me just say this in reference to Matt. When we as a town brought Matt in, we made a clear difference between what we had had in the past as a town administrator. For a number of years, we had had town administrators who were capable, uh, but not very active or. People who were more focused on the issues there, one of the things that we've been gifted with. By Matt, as Matt understands the needs of our town and has actively worked with the council for the last. Number of years since he's been here and what you see is that we as a town are in a very, very different position. Because we have a very smart town administrator behind the scenes who's driven these things and I will say. I'm supremely indebted to that, so when you talk about this comprehensive plan, you have to realize. That there's a lot of pieces in place that would have never happened with Tiger Fuel, with Bird Street, with a number of other things. Had we not both had a plan, but also a very active grant request system and things that have made those happen, so. One of the things I just wanna say, I appreciate hearing you all talk right now, is that. On the one hand, this conversation, which is really being driven by the PUD, which again is ultimately being driven. Because we are in a very different place right now than we've been in the past where this is real, this is a real conversation. There's a lot of people who've wanted for years and had lots of great talk about trying to get this. Factory back into play, well, we now have a chance to really do it, we, we can really do this and. I think it's great that we're looking at the comprehensive plan, but recognize there's a confluence of things that are coming together. From my perspective as a town councillor, this is, we really do have an opportunity to do something here if we choose to.
Has anything else developed with these? Developers of the plant?
No new business, our, um, planning grant work is complete, um, so we, we finished the. Environmental study and surveys, so those documents are public and available to any investor, we don't have anything, um, on agenda yet.
Okay, but are there plans in place or are people talking to the town council about, um, moving forward on plans?
Town council had a closed session meeting, um, in July.
Think you could share about that? Why did we never hear about this?
Sorry, the, um, I can, I can talk about the, um, the kind of the state of how it works. They can't talk about it because the, the investment decisions are private until an application is made. So the, the, the reason that town council does closed meeting on something like that is to. Learn about potential business investments and protect the privacy of the investment.
Totally understood, I'm just, Dan is talking to us about how we need to get this bug going and, and. Get this in place and all that, but.
I hear a little bit of a sense of urgency there, but.
Well, yeah, and, and maybe I would too, if I knew what's going on.
Right, and, and that's the, the, the problem is that it, right, it can't be public until they submit something.
Well, the one thing, uh, Ms. Angeline, one thing I will say, again, there's not a, there's not a secret in the sense that when. High Sun went out of business and put people out of work and has been sitting dormant for a number of years, it's a. Depreciating asset that has been there, it has had a number of different things, I know, we all know that, but. One of the things that's happened, if you think of the pieces that have been done, by having the 36 houses. Come to fruition on Bird Street, that is a very major piece that has just happened, that has gonna be a, a huge bright light. For the town for decades to come and that is a draw to anyone who looks at that factory, because when they think of. The town, we've just made a decision to opt to be forward-thinking. And we walk through a difficult, uh, town debate, but at the same time, we decided to move forward in that and. In that regard, it's a no-brainer, you can look across, not very far in Charlottesville. And you can look at a number of different successful business ventures that have been done, that have taken old factories and have turned them into successful businesses, just in Charlottesville, let alone many other cities, it's a very. Common formula these days, our dormant factory is something that is of interest, I, I, I've had a friend. Who's a businessman in Charlottesville who dialogued with me for several years about it and. Uh, at the moment, I, I will just say to you, he's, he's not somebody who. Has a current interest in it at the moment, but by dialoguing with him over the last few years, it made me realize. Much against, much different from what a lot of people have speculated, there's lots of interests that people have. Business-wise, both in our town, COVID has changed the way that people understand it, we have people shifting out of larger cities that wanna come to a small town like ours, so. Again, I'm simply saying that we have an opportunity. As a town, and I think it's wise for us to realize that this opportunity is. Not something that we want to take lightly, I think it's great that we're having this discussion tonight and other times. To think about how does this relate to, I, I talked to our former mayor on this subject, uh, this last week, cause I wanted to. Talk through with her, she was the mayor when this, this most recent. Planning, uh, document was created and we talked about the process that we went through as a town to do this and. It's very much in support of exactly what we're trying to do here as the planning commission to try to prepare for. Uh, something specifically as to the growth of our town.
Well, when you can, let us know, because it would be really helpful to know what kinds of things might be. Coming down the pike and be able to incorporate that in.
Well, that, that's something that as, as our town administrator has said that. Absolutely, we are a public entity and as much as publicly possible, whatever we know, we wanna make available to everybody else. That's only, uh, limited by very extreme circumstances, so to speak, and that, that limited information is something. That again, Mr. Lawless will keep us aware of.
Uh, absolutely, as, as soon as we get something that can be public record, we'll absolutely shout it in. The, kind of marching orders for, um. Work in the past year have come from the smaller area, so we had, um, market study work three years ago. Um, laid out the, the basic area, um, public opinion survey. And it had a set of sort of scenarios for the building. And I think those give a good example of what could happen. The economic consultant in business is also in business as a, as a renovator, so they were somebody who could have. Walked the building if they liked what they saw well enough. They didn't, they, they looked at it and went on, but, um, when they, when they walk through, um, these kinds of mixed shoes, these kinds of mixed shoes. Dealing with the infrastructure, this gives you a sense of the scale of what could happen. So I think that's market-tested and realistic, it wasn't quite enough of a win-win for, um, Walker Shaw to go ahead and buy it. But it's within the numbers. We shattered members.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
So what are the comments?
Um, one thing that sort of speaks to, uh, at least as a corollary to what you guys were talking about. Is the absence of, there's not very active language, there's not very binding language and I, it feels more passive and more. I, I appreciate and recognize the goal of this document as, as goal-setting, um, but. I have the impression that this isn't something that's being looked at as something with any kind of teeth.
I took out so much passive voice and made it, and it's still like, okay, who's, who's gonna do it and how much money are they gonna spend?
Right.
That was one of the bigger things that stood out to me.
Um, sent.
You mean going from twenty thirteen to twenty eighteen?
Yeah, just, just changing, um, sentences like, non-conforming uses should be eliminated. We should eliminate non-conforming uses.
Yes.
How are we gonna do that? Um, but how are we gonna do that? And like, okay, which ones are we talking about really? Is where we can be more specific.
What you need for what we're working on now?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're in here in twenty thirteen.
Right, right. So thirteen had that, a lot of that, it ought to happen language. I, I tried to tighten up.
And I noticed that was like the sidewalks. And so when we're talking about having a developer look at this as a guidebook for what they need to be bringing to our table, um, I'm seeing a lot of wiggle.
Yeah, maybe we need two documents. One that, um, you know, then explains the first action. In more detail and more action.
Well, that, I, that's what I was talking about at the beginning of the meeting. And this is the, this is the goal-setting. And then it's incumbent upon us to say, all right, we're gonna take goal two, and we're gonna look at the strategies, and we're gonna look at the objectives. How, you know, I mean, I'm assuming the strategies are getting at, how are we going to accomplish objective one and objective two and three? But like, how are we gonna sit down and make these things happen? How is this going to be implemented? So we have to put this into plan, you know?
And I think that's really powerful, convey that with the council. And then they can put, um, budget numbers on those things.
Right.
And that sort of manages it back and forth of, if we can convert this into dollar signs and those are obscene numbers of dollars, now we're talking about priorities setting. That's, that's really.
Right.
Really helpful.
So this is the place we always get to, is that we have a lot of good plans and we kind of know where we need to go, but.
Well, I, we need to look through this document and say, what are our priorities as a planning commission and how, which, which one we respect?
Well, I love the action plan of looking at SUPs in relation to the conflict. So found some sort of momentum with that.
Would that be helpful as a, like, uh, part of the history? It's like a, a track record on here. In past five years, there was a number, a number of important votes taken. And sort of, here's what we got. So it's kind of a, a deep read for success, failure.
Yeah. And what can you say about that?
Well, I think it would be really helpful in each of our planning commission meetings to take sections of this document as homework for the following, you know, the following month and say, okay, let's look at the land use. Out of all of these goals, have we, have we achieved any?
Right.
And if we haven't, do they still matter to us?
Yeah, yeah.
If they do, what are the priority lists? And if, and then once we prioritize things, which one are we, we'll take priority one. And we'll look like, how are we gonna implement this? What strategies will we implement to get to these plans? And as we do that, we have a year to update this plan plan, update section by section every meeting if we make progress towards this goal.
So how does this work?
How does what?
How does the P D?
Well, I think that, I mean, it fits in with plan, but it's, you know?
Current.
Yeah. Or, you know, it, we can, we can take, you know, we can take a look at that and go on a next, next meeting or whatever. But I, I can think like, let's really start making progress on getting through this document, updating it as part of each meeting instead of waiting until that very end and saying, oh, we have a month to make this entire thing.
Would you be able to help us put together just a listing or a big one kind of item list of things that have happened in the last couple of years that have made impacts?
Yeah, and, and I think it's important for us to figure out where we're at right now. Some of these, and I mean, sure, some of these are going beyond, just because their philosophy, their guiding document, right?
One, one of the things I think it's worth, and this goes back to our town administrator, uh, and let me just say this, planning commissioners, uh, I know that this document is new to us as the planning commission. It's not a new document to the town. And it's actually as our, every once in a while, I'm gonna say this just to throw mud in the sand, so to speak. He basically would say it's a useless document, our, our mayor, three years, three administrations ago. And the reason I say that is, what's important is what are we actually trying to do as a town? What our town administrator does at times is he will drive issues to us that he knows are relevant. And if you recall, the reason we had this conversation here, at least from my understanding, is not to get into this whole thing tonight or something. It's to say, is that, is this document, does it back up us working on the PUD? Does it make sense in keeping with the town? Are we going to move forward? That, these, that, that's my understanding. And I, I would say that it does. But again, as we get into the longer conversation, you also have to realize, we can have lots of nice talks about all these plans, but unless there's buy-in from the town, unless there's interest by people to actually do something, whether it's the town council or whether it's private entities, we can create lots of nice plans that are meaningless. It's a, it's, so I guess I would caution you from worrying about creating the right plan. And what I would suggest is, think about the plan that is in sync with either what private entities wanna do, with what our town as a town council wants to do, what we as a planning commission wanna do. But to just have an academic exercise come up with a better plan, to me, is a waste of time.
I don't think this is an academic exercise. I, I think this is a very important document. So I would disagree with that mayor three years ago or whatever. Um, whoever you were referring to.
That's, that's Mayor Grove I'm referring to.
Um, but, you know, I don't think that this is, you know, creating new zoning districts to get businesses thriving down here. That's not an exercise in academia. It's just not. It's, it's creating better zoning for this town. And so I, you know, in addition to the PUD and in addition to things that are pushed our way, I think as a body, we need to be more proactive. And I think tackling some of these goals and really sitting down and putting forth strategies for how we're going to accomplish the goals and, and make these, these plans that we've set forth as important to us isn't an exercise in acting. So.
Or a waste of time after you.
I, I felt similarly in organizing the, the plan during the update. I, I wanted to understand, so I was doing the job at that point. I, I wanted to know kind of what the priorities were in the first two years on the job of kind of combining the comp plan with some council strategy. What do we have, we're gonna work on most, most urgently, where you are, budgeting sorts of. So this, um, this age twenty-nine action is, this will be familiar to, um, basically, um, ask budgets. Council did a workshop priority setting on this during the update process. Talking about within those, within the strategies, what were our top priorities for that year? Fixing up the drains on the farmer's market, because the gutters were really messed up there. The, the reason we pushed and got new drains on the farmer's market was because we heard that feedback and it's in here to make the farmer's market building look better. So some of these got done. It anticipated construction over shoot. New, uh, poster signs that can always inspire, so they have taken a lot of water damage. Um, things like that. And, and I was focusing on things that would make a visible impact and can, but didn't cost very much or where I knew we could get other money. Um, so kind of what's, what's visible and impactful but not too expensive. Um, some of the things that are harder to get to, right? There's, there's never a good time to update the zoning importance, but you have to be more disciplined and, and make that time. So that, that's the one where, you know, downtown commercial didn't get rewritten. And instead, we've been dealing with SUPs and shoe-worn and small businesses and spaces and.
We started it just a couple of months ago and then we dropped it again because we got distracted with so many priorities.
It's hard to sustain.
It's, yeah.
Um, but I really, I really like this page and would love to do more with that. Out of all of these goals, how do we kind of fit them into time? And how do we try to resource them?
So in addition to working on, I think we should tackle some of this comp plan updates and setting some of our meetings.
I'm interested in some data updates at the same time. So what we do, that like, there's sort of a back and forth in the document between a goal section and then a data section follows later.
Right.
If I can, you know, quickly do our census updates. And then we talk about like population growth and the fourth of housing. And we look at that data side by side.
Right.
That's helps to inform that goal decision.
Right.
Yeah.
I think too, one of the, you know, one of the biggest things we heard in getting the Bird Street houses approved, and as we look at developing the tire factory, is the, you know, the, the roads, VDOT. Like, can we get an actual, like, I, I'm so tired of getting the wishy-washy, oh, well, you know, it's hard, but you know, can't, we can't predict housing number or, you know, like monetary numbers for housing prices. We can't, you know, anticipate this and we can't anticipate that. But like, can we get somebody to say, to do some sort of like real traffic study about how significant numbers of, you know, housing units or, you know, apartment units or business units would affect traffic on Route twenty in our town?
Like a.
Without a second road.
For our, our own data.
For our own data, yes. Without any like development, specific development in mind, is that possible?
And, and the company that did the evaluation of the tire plan, I mean, could that be part of your scope, basically, to bring that?
The, um, it, it's too late in the, in the sense that they've already, they've already completed the work that they were contracted for, which wasn't our own traffic analysis. But they, they've taken pictures of these sites. They, they've been here with their surveyors and their field engineers. So pretty easy to go back and ask them for, you know, our own traffic assessment all through town and use that.
Because we did the environmental, they did the environmental assessment. So I feel like we got that question answered.
Yeah.
And, but like, there's still this big, like, how are we gonna put anything back there without sidewalks and without any type of second road or road expansion on the current road?
Right. I, I think that's also really helpful for improvements that need to come from VDOT. Our, our pages twenty-five and twenty-six say, um, convey these priorities that I'm modeling VDOT. And it's got, you know, five roadway improvements, which haven't happened in fifteen minutes. The streetcape work is the last thing to, you know, visit. So we contain it, but maybe our, maybe our own set of data of problems would inform more specifically dot work and maybe think we need more sidewalks.
Well, and I think, I think there's some real problem areas in town that VDOT has decided.
Yes. They, they have. Um, the, the, I'm sorry, the, the logic is, um, total number of crashes. We, we know a few crashes. And twenty-nine and sixty-four, there are more crashes.
Well, and that's hard too, because are they comparing our numbers to them or?
It's, right.
One to listen.
Crashes for, crashes for thousands, like, is one thing. Get kind of an intensity.
Yeah.
But they, you know, they, they put the fog lights on after now. And that was a big investment. But it's, um, I have heard you don't have the traffic and you don't have the crash data to support exchange, which hurts when the crash is someone you know.
Yeah.
Well, is there anything in town that we can do? Like even, you know, this Bird Street intersection right here, there's cars parked all the way up to the intersection. You can't even see when you're trying to pull out of there. So as a town, can we just say, you know, we're taking these four parking spots away? You could no longer park here.
That is much more action. And, and I think of, of, of kind of heart to heart with our VDOT staff about, you know, building a three-hundred-foot-wide traffic circle is really expensive and not likely to happen. But removing a couple of parking spaces to improve sightlines, very difficult. Um, so that's a.
Putting in a flashing pedestrian, we've been talking about that for how many years?
Every.
Can we get that done?
Here, here's what we want, what would it cost? And then, okay, either, either VDOT please put us in line for this improvement. Or if this is what it costs, give us permission to deal with our census.
Right.
If it's important enough to town.
And I think tackling that low-hanging fruit now, before there's any development either proposed, is going to help us as planning commissioners make better decisions. You know, maybe that, the town will be, you know, people will be less angry about the idea of more traffic on our roads if we're making improvements now.
Even progress forward.
Right.
Well, which would just be a, that's the scratching surface if we were.
Sure.
More development.
Right. But at least if we could tackle some of that stuff that doesn't really require VDOT to get involved in.
Well, what about flashing lights over the road? Is that a town responsibility?
The, the, VDOT owns the right of mine. They, they do snowplowing, paving, striping. It's their doctrines. So anything that touches the road, either they do or they get, or they take a permit for, for others to do. So, yeah, you're changing a stop line, change stop sign, changing a light, building a crosswalk. All of that is either VDOT does it or they give permission for it.
I really kind of feel like all the measures that have been taken to curb that pipe activity, um, people flying through town, the trucks coming into town so fast. I want that to happen.
Now, our police sheet agrees with people's speed because the road feels like it fits a certain speed.
Yeah.
Writing tickets only helps with so much. You would love a better engineered road where people didn't speed.
Right.
Well, and, you know, when you're trying to cross that road, going back to the cars, cars all the way to the intersection, like, nobody can even see you standing behind a car waiting across the road until they're already passing you.
Sightline study is something I can do now. For sure. That doesn't need to wait for.
Let's get some stuff.
By the way, I just wanted it to be known that I, um, I do know what you're talking about earlier. And I agree, and I'm glad you talked about kind of some of the heated discussions and things like that. It all has to be sweet. So you were playing coy? I was, that's totally true. Shh, keep it up. Wait, no, I was really honestly not really hearing that part of the meeting. So I really have to go. Although that kind of stuff comes up. Maybe I just was desensitized to it. But anyway. She can move on. I just wanted you to.
So where, where are we on our?
I don't think we even started, but we've gotten some little discussion. I mean, yeah, I think this is to help focus our future meetings. Um, so recap of where we're at now. Um, conversations about what's still relevant, community input, feedback from, um, your email last month about all the surveys that have been done over the last few years in town. Um, yes, we can consider what, if any, um, maybe if we wanna do a new survey or, or new focus groups, we can definitely talk through what we'd like to see, what makes the most sense, um, to make sure that these are. To make sure that these are, you know, see what others have to say about what is irrelevant and how about you, which we want to have here. I didn't spend enough time looking at this bird wing proposal, but I think this is a really good framework for us. How to proceed, if you all haven't had a chance. Please take a look at this because this is a professional group that has given us a proposal on how they would do this. This comp plan update for us. They want to charge sixty something thousand dollars to do it, which obviously is not feasible for a town of our size, with our tax base. So we're going to look at this and figure out what we can do, what we have, maybe what we. All super relevant, which probably best practices on a big city. We can learn a lot from this, so let's, I'll take some time to look at this also.
And this, I, I really appreciated their like pricing details. They tell you how many of their personnelers go into all of these tasks. And these are in order as well. So, you know, first they look at your existing documents, your census data, and then they do communications. Start tracking chapters in consultation with planning. That's where they start the time goes actually, right? Maybe open house hopefully matches up with the initial feedback that you got. And potentially have an asshole. But this is a thousand hours of professional planning. I can't fit that into my job. And even dividing it seven ways still fills our, fills our agendas for the next year. That's the problem. And so you either, you know, eat this with less time or get more help.
And if we needed like some à la parts, okay, cool.
Yeah. The, I don't think I'm above it, but if you're just getting helpful workshops, you can do that. If you're just getting helpful tech, you can do that. Some of these pieces also chunk off into internship projects pretty well, better, better than others. So I feel comfortable with that for parts of it, if we can give, you know, clear instruction about what we're going to work. Excellent summary.
Again, I, I know you mentioned it last time, but tell us again when you want this. Let's see, if we're like the final in 2023?
Oh, oh goodness.
Or when do, when does the town council want from us?
The attorney general does not run around prosecuting towns for failing to update their compliance in a time manner. And Charlottesville is two years late right now and there's a lot of reasons for that. So I think doing it right is more important than doing it quickly. And if we have the, like the, like the chef said, you can have it good, fast, and cheap. And if we're going for good and cheap, it's going to be slow. This whole thing takes two years from now. As I, as I was looking at that table of contents and. The idea of bringing packages of like content updates and goal reviews, I don't know if I'm going to be able to sustain that every month. Like in every other month, kind of do the work, process what you said in the one month, get ready the next month. And so every other month, we take on one of these chunks.
Yeah. I think, to me, I don't know what the rest of you guys think. I think looking at the objectives and implementation strategies section of this document. So we can look at, you know, the introduction and land use for the next meeting. We can move on to the next historic scenic and, you know, natural resources. And we could just get through this section where the goals and strategies are really laid out. And then decide if we need to have. Community outreach and focus groups and things like that with, with the town to say, we've looked at each of these sections. Here are, here are the goals and here's the, you know, if we get the strategies of the town. But like, here's the goals, do these still, are these still important to us as a town? And then we updated that.
Yeah, it would, it would now, it would help me narrow down what kind of questions are you asking.
Exactly, yeah. And, you know, do we still, still care about these things? Do we care about other things? Do we care about all of this plus other things? I don't know. I, I, I think before we reach out to the community, we have to have very clear, like, what information we want from the public. Because we hear a lot, I mean, we hear a lot from them when we do these, these outreach activities. And I don't, from my recollection, I don't ever hear it changing so, you know, very radically like about what people want in the town. But maybe after COVID it will, I don't know. I don't know. To me, that seems like a logical place to start, is, is to really take a look at these items.
I, I appreciate the, the goal review and then a more focused question asking.
Right.
Because right now, my, my community survey will be pretty vague.
Right.
Around, would that change? Get everything from, we really need a chip plate to, we really need a trash on the street. Scale of this passage of the compliment.
Right.
Well, I, I for one, follow this section that talks about, you know, things that, that it's broad, but these are the things that are included. The location of existing when proposed recycling centers. Yeah, I mean, can we take that out because they're building one and it's not? I mean, it's not.
For example, yes.
Take out the possibility of a future one?
When, when this, when this update was done, the county had been talking very daily about maybe doing something like that down here. It's going to be finished in like January. And then it will exist and be permanent. And if we think that's good enough, and if you want to take your recycling decane and it will not cost you anything, we don't have to do anything else. Problem solved.
Yeah.
Or do we want to do more at the hyper local level of complacency and recycling?
You know, I don't, I don't know whether there's another section that talks about recycling. This is, you know, under the section that says, however, the code of Virginia does recognize certain specific elements of a comprehensive plan. For example.
Yeah, but it might be good enough for us to say, that's where you go.
Right.
We don't think this is going to change.
Yeah. Thank you for answering that question.
Yes.
You're so cute. It's like, I, I just want to say, yes, you were the queen.
Can you just say that? Oh, you're sitting already.
Oh, yeah. Okay. So. Which is, oh, A is an introduction.
Yeah, so that's why I said we can do the introduction and then use maybe the next meeting.
Okay.
In addition to the pub.
In addition.
Not in exclusion of.
Yes. Well, I didn't say anything about the pub. I didn't say it. Not in the half hour at least.
I don't know, let's, let's get it together, but the, those land use goals should line up with the objectives. That's the point, that pub projects would be consistent with comp plan.
Right.
So looking, looking at land use goals and looking at pub goals side by side could be fruitful.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there aren't too many of these sections. Maybe we just take the next four months to do a side by side.
I mean, it would be comprehensive plan plus these, you know, sections. Okay, Shannon.
Yeah.
Would you mind sending out an email to us outlining the questions that you were talking about? What you need to focus on for each one of these sections? Like, we're going to be looking at the introduction and the land use, correct?
Yeah.
So this, maybe that's coming up on the bit.
Right, so just looking at like, under land use, there's goal one and goal two and.
And that's all, that's only four pages.
Right.
But every, every strategy should be relevant.
Right.
So it's closer.
Yeah, so looking at, so I didn't have any specific questions, but just looking at the goals and asking ourselves, are these goals consistent with what we think they should be? Do we need to add to them? Do we care about the goal? Like if one of the goals was a recycling center, we can take it off because we're getting tenants down the road.
And I, some of this language has not really changed in 30 years. So I hope as we go through that, we find, okay, that's done.
Right. Right.
And, and how can our next session, so for example, if we're talking about land use in our next session, how can that work to having a really good focus group? So should we walk away with questions that we want to ask in our focus group? Or should we, instead of just saying, hey, read this, what do you think? I mean, should we have, should we walk away with three questions that we want to focus or something like that? Like what should be our goal from?
Yeah, I mean, maybe for each section, it's, are these goals still relevant to you town member? If they're not, what is relevant to you regarding land use? If they are, you know, how like, I don't know, I don't know if we want to ask the town for strategies. That's appropriate.
That's a section.
Right?
That's it.
Yeah. But yeah, I was thinking like we could get through all of these sections. There are not, I think there's three or four of them. Then, unless you want to have a focus group that just focuses on one section at a time. Or if we want to just knock them all out once.
We could do a quarterly, annual review of what we have.
That doesn't feel so bad, doing one of those chunks every month. You're only, you're only talking. Four, four or five pages of expert view and then tracking the follow up. And that's, that's not so bad.
Well, I think that's a digestible amount for our first kind of foray into this. We find out what we really want to know and then move on and we have more than one section.
Yeah, it's four chunks of those strategies.
I just thought of something about that.
Is our next meeting Labor Day weekend? So we.
The Tuesday. I can, I can give some progress review on these as well. I've, I've done some of that since the last time we talked about it. Of where I know we've done work. Without going back through like the full census update, but just a quick. Here's some of what we've had activity or where. Honestly, I've never done any work on this topic, never cited it in a set of the board. It feels pretty dull. I think we'll have some of those that are.
I think this. Will concrete things up.
Did, I, would, would you also like to, um, formalize that traffic study question? I thought that, that was a pretty, pretty important item, which does cost.
Right.
I think there would be town council interest in that as well. Should we work that out as a sense of the group that we would work that out to town council or ask, ask for some traffic study?
Yeah.
Go deal traffic study instead of VDOT blowing us off.
Yeah, that, that we, that we own. And if a developer brings us numbers, we can say, well, here's our numbers.
Right. Right, and we will build a second road because our study says we need to.
Right.
Or what is there sufficient?
Yeah.
This X amount of people traveling down.
I, I think that's where a lot of the public concern comes from, that we, we have a sense that our streets can't handle much more. Where there are existing problems, which it says regardless of how much traffic goes through. And we want these things fixed and we don't know how that's going to happen. So why, why should we accept more and make these problems worse? We don't see how we're going to get that right.
So can this encompass like the town completely? Like include the, you know, the travel owner sections, like both of the ones on James River Road and the.
I'll scope it. I think the, the kind of pricing will kind of be guided by how many intersections are you looking at? And surpass that net cautiously.
Because they're all. Yeah, I heard you.
Yeah.
It's, it's a step forward, but I, I really think they all need to be looked at.
The, the most unsafe I feel in town is when I'm running uphill on Popple Spring and I can't see around the pages. And I, I go like this when I'm running so someone can see me as they come down the hill.
Yeah, I heard you.
But there's a lot of things like that.
Yeah, like going up hardware to turn on James River Road and people coming around from Lenham. Whoa.
Also get the stop signs marked as two-way stop signs up at the very beginning of, when you give it to town. Up by James River Road.
Yes. I noticed that today.
That's why I think we have flexions.
Yeah, through traffic that's not stopped.
Right, through traffic that's not stopped. But that they're not two-way stop signs. So when you're sitting there and I'm going straight and you're turning left in front of me, you don't have the right of way. I have the right of way.
True.
But nobody treats it like that. And if you, if I treat it like that, then I get big old like, some fun hand signs eat at me and lots of, what are you doing lady?
Yeah.
You're not following the traffic rules. So everybody already treats it as a two-way, so let's just mark them as a two-way.
Yeah.
So then, no matter, like if you get there first, you have the right of way. Because that's how it's treated. Well, it's to keep like, if you're, if you're moving through the intersection, it's safer to keep going.
Yeah.
Straight than to stop and wait for somebody to turn left in front of you. It is not, unless it's marked as a four-way or a three-way or a two-way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The left-hand purpose.
Yeah. But so now I just, I'm always like playing, I feel like I'm always playing chicken at that intersection. And I go to that intersection because I hate coming out down here.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I can't see anything when I'm sitting in my short little small car.
Yeah, I did that same thing.
Yeah. So I'm always up there. Turning left.
Yeah.
Wait, that was a new. I covered the first one at the intersection. Maybe I'm going to try it elsewhere.
Going to get the police chief on, on a little tickle video.
Well, some people, some people treat, you know, like some people follow the rule and then other, a lot of other people don't. So then I never know who's going to do what. Then I'm always just sitting there like, please just go, just go.
See, that's why you need flashlights.
Just mark stop signs, just let's just make them two. Maybe it's just me. But I do feel like there's a lot of little safety things that could be done around.
Like my area makes it very convenient to go up far here and do U-turn at Route 20.
Yeah.
You know. But it's unsafe. That whole maneuver through there is completely ridiculous. So I'm going to cut off him completely. What do you think?
I just feel like if me as a town could fix these little things to make, make improvement in traffic. I, I do think like marketing, like getting rid of those parking spots and some stop signs.
Yeah, I, I definitely agree. It's, it's confidence building and it makes a difference right away. And then we can, it seems like you can't start dating shovel for less than $5,000 on the app. So sticking the signs in paint. It's like, this is starting.
Right.
I appreciate this very much. I've got a much better sense of what we can achieve on a complaint update that's reasonable and stoked meaningful as far as planning without it just being, gosh, this is gonna be a hundred thousand dollar consultant project to do it right. But we don't wanna cut corners on it. So we just stop. This, this feels like it makes real progress on something really.
Yeah, I think so too. And I'm glad we got together for this meeting.
So for the agenda for the next meeting, so we'll do, we'll tackle a section, the introduction and the land use. And then will the PUD also be on the agenda for next, like?
I still have that as a whole business.
Okay.
But I, I think this is really promising that if the, cause where I was struggling was on those goal statements for, for, for PUD. Do they, are they right? And, and if we, if it goes well on this land use goals thing, like, okay, these goals pretty much make sense, but here's some edits. Here's how we wanna change it. And then immediately line that up with the PUD goal statements and they pretty much match.
So we're gonna do that at the same time?
If
In like in the meeting, like we're gonna review this and then we're gonna pull out our PUDs and we're gonna say, all right, which of these statements applies to land use?
That makes sense to me. If it makes sense to you. It shouldn't, it shouldn't be too hard to kind of set those aside and line them up. And if they, if they align, then you can have some confidence that your PUD matches not only your current complaint, but your likely future complaint too. And you won't have to redo all that work in a couple of years. And maybe that gives enough confidence to recommend something.
That makes sense.
Okay. Or if there's a, if there's a major debate about land use goals, if we were really of two minds about whether sidewalks and trails were important or not, then you can go and get public feedback on that question, which is so controversial. That's not fair.
Right. Any comments on this? Okay. Think we can close this agenda item? Thank you.
This is super helpful.
Thank you, Matt.
And then if you guys seem like if you're driving through town on the corner of UVA, there's your crosswalk and you have your button that you press, but it has the sign above it that links. Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay, good. So if that's on the sidewalk, mounted on the sidewalk anyway, does that, is that a way of taking that out of DDOT's purview and into our own?
We can build stuff that's on.
Do we want to get I think having like a sign that, I mean, that sticks up that drivers can see as they're coming like into town would be extremely helpful. It's kind of a death trap out there.
I've almost died three times since I moved here.
I'm sorry, that's not funny. I'm really surprised. Like, my seven-year-old, I got home the other day and he was like, hey mom, look, I went down to Bane's. And I got this brisant and I was like, oh. And then I went inside and talked to my husband and he was, and I just thought he had gone down with some friends. And it looks like, no, he went down by himself. But then when I talked to my seven-year-old about it, he's like, yeah, some lady had helped me cross the street. Cause I, I couldn't get, there was no like break in traffic. I couldn't get across the road. And I was like, okay, did she ask you where we were?
I'm glad he wasn't welcome.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we're trying to do little things to help him build some confidence and independence. But yeah, I was a little, little alarmed when he said he had crossed Route Forty by himself because it, it's, he had to stop.
I go to Bane's much more often. I'm just trying to quit.
I'm not changing.
But I've admitted that I have a problem if I'm moving off there. But yeah, every time I get out of my car. And then there are people who just randomly go over the line and just straddle the central line and cheer. Of course, my response is go.
Who did we get for the, the limits?
We
Speed responsive spigot.
Number four, since we have something to read, maybe something.
I can pass this on whoever wants to read the motion for closing.
Does someone wanna read the motion?
Yes, yeah.
There is a word in the sound, a little phrase, word, and that's on the first. Okay. And then there's the, I'm sure that I've mentioned it, since it's before it.
I, I sent, I sent the invite in hand today. So I'm, I'm going to the one at, at Empire before that.
Oh, okay.
I can't do the one again. I wanna keep a close eye on how, when we're all screening that, if there's any information, I'll be, or practices that we're doing.
Yeah.
It's helpful if there's. Sure.
This is from the event. Talks about the compliance. Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
How helpful. I don't know how to agree with her, but she's very helpful.
Some trash cannons here.
So, um, let's say, that's the cheat sheet of legal reasons for entering a court session. So rough call section, certify the facts.
Well, we did this actually.
After we come out, you're, you're certifying. And then, um, so you've got, you've got a couple of options there. Anyway, I don't, I don't know exactly what the chair wants to talk about. So take, take a look at that list and make sure that I picked the right one.
Well, they have decided that they wanted to go with a signing, an appointment, promotion.
Is that, is that what you would want, Chair?
The format such specific salaries, discipline, or salaries. I'd like to talk about some of these.
And now for me, resignation, well, that's a few more. So like salaries or appointments or employees are many public bodies. Right. It's basically pertaining to staff and internal.
Group, yes.
Okay, you ready?
Yes.
Okay. I move that the planning permission enter a closed meeting as authorized in subsection A of Virginia Code Section two point two dash three seven one one. Specifically the subsection assign, or one, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, sales, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body.
Well, thanks.
Motion?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.